She work with activists in the Chayla.
The New York City Department, Access School Citywide Office. Let's track this down. Alternative Schools Program for Adult Education. Glenn, uh, Jack, Neil and Jerry.
Hi.
Hey, how are you?
How can I help?
Um, I don't need help right at this moment, but I will in a minute or two.
You taking pictures of?
I'm recording.
Okay, hold on. You can't just come in and start recording, that's the problem. You gotta get permission from the inside.
Why?
Because that's the way things go.
What's your name, ma'am?
Benevente.
You have a badge number?
You can look at it right there.
I can see it.
Yes, it is.
Did you forget it?
Two, three, five, four.
Two, three, five, four.
Alright, you can have a seat out there. I'll call somebody. What exactly do you need?
I guess I'll let them know when they come.
Okay, let me call.
Go ahead. So, yeah. I guess it'll tell you where. Benevente.
Adult Ed. Okay, thank you. Alright, bye. Somebody's coming.
Thank you. That's what they would like, but it's not mandatory. Fucking music is killing me. We only count four people in the elevator. Supposed to be. Suicide. I think this is where we just came from. It's hot. It is hot in here. It's muggy outside. It's like humid. It's muggy, humid. Sticky.
He said he would, um, when somebody come up, he would let him know. If someone comes out. Yeah. Hi, can I help you?
Yes.
This is an off putting to be on camera.
What would that be?
Because it's my, it's my private image. How can we help you?
Your private image?
Alright, I'll sit back.
What's your name, ma'am?
I can't give you my name.
You can't because you work for the public.
I wanna help you, so.
Yeah, I was wondering what your name was. I wanna know who's helping me today.
Yeah, I need you to turn off your camera because it's a violation of my privacy.
You don't have privacy, ma'am. You're a public servant and you're in your official capacity. You don't know that. I'm trying to, I'm trying to conduct business and you're being rude to me. What's your name, sir? Maybe you could help me. You work here?
I guess they feel the same way.
So you?
I'm the only public servant.
You know that denial of public services is against the law, right? It's a crime. Can you remind them that I came here to conduct business?
What do you need?
I want to do a FOIA request.
A what?
FOIA.
FOIA request?
Yeah.
I've never heard of that.
It's for public records, Freedom of Information Law.
Okay. You might be in the wrong building.
I'm in the right building. I want information on this building, so.
Oh.
I speak to supervisor, please?
That is a supervisor, unfortunately.
Yeah, so I wanna get her name, her title, her salary.
I can't give you that. She would have to give you that.
This is Board of Education, right?
It's part of the Board of Education.
So she works for the public, her name, her salary, her schedule.
I cannot give you that. I wouldn't even know that.
I'm not asking you to give it to me. I just wanna, I want her to help me fill out my FOIA request.
Okay, so have a seat. I'm gonna let her know what you need.
I just sat patiently and waited for somebody to be rude to me, so I think I'm gonna stand.
Alright, you can stand.
I know, thank you.
Cause I have a lot of people that's coming in. Pasa señora.
I'm not stopping her.
Si, es aquí. Tú puede venir a las cinco de la tarde hoy y trae tu ID nada más y te van a dar un examen a ver en qué nivel estás. Dependiendo del nivel en la clase que te ponen.
Ah, okay. Pero exactamente a las cinco.
Puede venir a las cinco y media, seis, pero hay un tope porque esto se llena bastante. ¿Ah, es verdad? Sí. So, ven. Si no puede venir hoy, ven mañana.
Ah, how they conduct business with that music so loud? So we just wait, I guess. It's cold.
Okay, I do not do that here. Right. Well, I can ask him. A three one one issue? Okay.
This is crazy.
Okay, no problem. Alright, got it. Hi, she said they don't do that here?
They do. They do.
Technically, they don't, um.
Why wouldn't they? It's a government office.
It's a public school office.
Right.
Okay, it's totally different.
All FOIAs by FOIA, by the FOIA law, all FOIAs must be in writing.
Okay.
So I wanted to come in.
Because I don't know anything about the FOIA.
So there's, there's a few ways that you can do it. You can do it online, you can do it by mail, and you can do it in person.
Okay.
I'm choosing to do it in person.
Right.
It's a legal document. I'm hoping that she's not denying me public services on camera.
She says that she does not do that here, no. That they do not do that here, and if you're not here on official business with an appointment, she said they cannot see you.
I'm here on official business. I'm trying to do a FOIA request.
And she said they do not do that here.
She has to. She has to take my FOIA and whoever she needs to forward it to, that's who she forwards it to.
They can do that to three one one?
Not everybody has a phone.
Unfortunately, you have one.
Doesn't make phone calls.
You have a camera? If you can take, she said you can record?
That's it.
I think you can make a three one one call. Well, I can't help you.
I came, even if I could, that's not the way that I'm choosing to do it. I'm choosing to do it in person with my public employees.
I understand that.
I would hope that they would do their job.
Unfortunately, I cannot force her to come out and help you.
It's against the law to deny me public services. That's called discrimination.
Okay, like I said.
If she can get somebody, if she can get, well, you can't force her to lose her job. She's, she's on camera denying me public services. Just remind her that.
I can't force her to, she said.
Maybe you can re, maybe you can remind her that she's on camera denying me public services. And discrimination. I didn't, I didn't think she heard me.
Oh, she heard you very well. Um, so.
Can you get somebody that feels comfortable with being on camera?
She's the manager. If she's the manager of the building, I can't.
Actually, Board of Education manages this building, right?
The Board of Education is around the corner.
Yeah?
That's where the superintendent's and everything.
Or maybe I can go there and report her.
Maybe you can, but I can't do anything for you. I don't want.
Can you give her her name?
I can't give you that.
Why? It's public information.
I cannot give you that.
Of course you could.
You can record me, but I cannot give you that.
Why not? It's public information.
Because she told you she did not feel comfortable.
Working for the public.
She said she did not feel comfortable you taking her image, so they.
So why did she decide to work for the public?
Huh? I'm good.
A camera is not, is not gonna take her soul or hurt her. It's just a camera.
Um, basically.
It's crazy.
She doesn't feel comfortable, so basically.
She should find a new job. Basically, she should find a new job.
I understand what you're saying, but the only thing I can do is not allow anybody in.
Hi, ma'am. Do you work here? Do you work here?
Yeah.
Um, maybe you can help me. I'm trying to do a FOIA request. I just want somebody to write out my request and I just wanna copy for my records and I just wanna submit it with you. I'm not expecting you to fulfill the FOIA request right now.
A FOIA request for?
A Freedom of Information Law request. I'm trying to get public information on this office. So I just wanna submit it. I just want you guys to write it out. I just wanna submit it, get a copy for my records. And then you just fo, you just forward it to whatever department you need to forward it to. That's all I'm asking, is to fill out a FOIA request. And your supervisor, your supervisor is denying me public services on camera, simply because I'm exercising my rights. That's discrimination.
I just don't know if there's anybody here right now that, um.
I just want, I just need somebody that works here for this office to write out my FOIA request. Or you can give me a paper. I'll fill it out. I just wanna submit it, get a copy, and I'll be on my way.
What does the paper entail, though?
So I wanna get the name, title, and salaries of all employees that work here, um, the budget, and maybe like the graduation rate, and that's it.
Maybe I can get somebody to copy that.
Yeah, I just need somebody to write it down and give me a copy, and I just wanna submit it.
He's recording and people here don't feel comfortable with him recording.
Well, you work for the, you guys are public employees, so the American citizens not only can watch you while we, while you guys work?
Oh, you can watch me.
Of course. It's called checks and balances. We have the right to check up on our government workers.
That's why I said.
And of course, your duties. She should have been, she should have been trained. As soon as you, as soon as you decide to work for the public, we could watch you while you work.
Hello?
It's like the president. If you can just help me, I just wanna write it out, submit it, get a copy, and I'll be on my way.
She's asking for a piece of paper. Um, I explained to him that.
She's saying that I gotta go through three one one. Thank you so much.
Yeah, so, um, he's not bothering me. I'll.
I'm not here to entertain. I'm here to conduct business. That's it.
Right. Like, right, okay, but I'm here. Um, he just wants some information, that's all. Um, I got it. Alright, thank you.
She's scared for you or something? Or is she scared I'm gonna hurt you or something? That's crazy. They came over here, checked on you twice. I thought you were supposed to keep them safe. We all keep each other safe.
Exactly, but.
I'm not a threat to, I'm not a threat to nobody.
I didn't think you were. I didn't think you were.
If I was, I don't think, most people that are threats, they don't record themselves, being a threat.
And even if they do, I didn't feel threatened.
With a face like this?
With a face like this? Come on.
Right, you look good.
Um, at the end of the day, some, hopefully somebody will be able to help you.
She's a supervisor, and you see how rude she is on camera? Imagine how, how she acts off camera.
Only thing I can say is.
She doesn't know that we could come up and check on her?
She didn't feel comfortable.
That's fine if you, and if you want privacy, you create it. You go into a private office. You don't have to help me, but I still need to conduct business. Somebody has to.
I'll be right back.
No worries. Somebody has to help me conduct business. Is this Access VR? Can you guys hear her?
Uh, she's recording, that's why she didn't feel comfortable.
This is crazy. Same.
Be right back.
Thank you. It's crazy. So I'll give you, give you guys some look at. It's not much, but it's better than looking at the walls. The music is killing me. Yeah, I think we got fucking Shaka Khan or something. I don't know her name.
This is interesting. So entertain, not entertain, but yeah, educate me. Yes.
On what?
On the pro, the agency you work with.
The agency I work with?
You don't work with an agency? You work alone?
I work alone.
So how did you find out about all this FOIA stuff? Because I never even heard of you.
So because you guys work for the public?
Right.
All your information is more and more severe information, not your address associated under that.
It's on, it's on file.
For your name, your title, so that's all public information. If you had cameras in here, that would be public information. I could request the cameras too. Um, so just what I do is I just go, I, I try to build transparency.
Okay.
I try to, you know, this, this is, um.
That's not a bad thing.
This is what they call the First Amendment audit.
That's not a bad thing.
This is, I'm auditing.
It's kind of interesting.
It is. It's very interesting to see how our public employees treat the public.
Now, I know I made a pretty good one.
You did good. You did, you did fine, but it's just.
I don't believe in being hostile.
No, that's good.
You know.
Why would you, you shouldn't work for the public if you wanna be hostile.
Exactly.
You know, cause, um.
But it was interesting. I'm like, hmm, I'm not proud of that.
Everybody's salary in here is tax funded, so everybody on the outside funds everybody that works here, and we have the right to come and check up on you. We also have the right to.
Don't we fund ourselves too?
Tiny bit, a tiny bit.
If we, if we work.
It's a tiny bit. It's like if we give you money and you're giving us a little bit of money back that we gave you, so it's like your money comes from.
Stax imbalance kind of thing.
Yeah, we can check on you while you work. And even if you wasn't at work, if you, once you leave this building, you're in public, we can record you in public.
Okay, that's cool. I mean.
There's no expectation of privacy in public. This is a public building.
There's no expectation of privacy at all.
Well, if you're in your house, if all your blinds are closed.
I'm not talking about the house.
Oh, I know what you're talking about.
I'm talking about the world, per se. So hopefully somebody.
You know how many, you know how many cameras she walked by since she left her house?
We all do. Everybody walks through a whole bunch of cameras.
There's cameras everywhere.
So basically, um.
Shout out to Kim's everywhere.
Hopefully, somebody will come on and help you.
I mean, how long do I gotta wait? This is ridiculous. I just wanna write down my information.
Even though.
Maybe you can help me. Can you get a piece of paper and a pen, and I'll write out my request, and you just give me a copy? So I could be on my way, cause I don't have all day. Just get a blank piece of paper for the copy.
Blank piece of paper?
Uh huh.
And just.
In a pen, and I'll fill it out. I'm gonna submit my FOIA request with you. To this office. They have to.
I think it's around the corner. That's the main office around the corner at ninety twenty seven.
Around the corner?
Yeah, ninety twenty seven. That's the building with the big flag over it.
How far is it?
Right, literally around the corner. All you gotta do is look up, you're gonna see a, a flag, a building.
She's the supervisor, right?
Yes, superintendent's there.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just remind her that the citizens have the right to redress our government. She works for the government, so at any point, I wouldn't need her name to file a complaint. Her name is public information.
Right, but she, I can't.
If she doesn't feel comfortable, that's fine, but I wanna file a complaint on her because of the way she treated me today.
Okay, so.
She was very rude. She denied me public services. It's ridiculous.
And you smell good.
Thank you. Have a great day.
You too. Take care.
This fucking video is longer than expected. I'm on like thirty percent when I started this video. I don't know how much percent I have left. Let's go check out the Board of Education, as if we could even get in. It looks like Long Island City for a second. Trans station. Let's go check the shit out. Oh, you know, I can have, this is Board of Education?
Yes, what do you have, officer?
Um, to conduct business.
Huh?
To conduct business.
Taking care of business?
Yeah.
Okay, what business it is?
I feel comfortable discussing that with them.
Okay, so you, the reason why I ask you is because I wanna know who I can send you to.
Just the superintendent?
The superintendent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, with the superintendent, automatically you have to make a scheduled appointment. So you're gonna go upstairs to the second floor, you're gonna sign in with the officer, and you're gonna see Natalie?
As her assistant?
No, that's the secretary to set up a scheduled appointment.
Assistant secretary.
Or, or Sonia Roque.
I'm trying to do a FOIA request, public information, and I wanted to file a complaint on, uh.
Yeah, so if it's.
Employee around the corner. No, it's a lady. I guess she works around the corner at the school, the adult.
Ninety oh one?
It's around the corner, right around the corner. It's like two floors. You go upstairs.
Well, I'm not too familiar with that building, but if you're here for the superintendent, then that's what you would do. You go upstairs, sign in, show them somebody.
What floor is that?
Second floor. You're gonna see Natalie.
You're gonna check out this office first?
No, no, no. You can't come down here, cause you said you're here for the superintendent.
Is this public?
Huh?
It's a public office?
That's why, that's why I asked you. That's why.
Yeah. So why'd you talk to me? So I'm recording.
Okay, that's why I asked.
Is this a public office right here?
It's definitely a public, but I need to know who I'm sending you to.
I'd like to enter this office right now.
For what? That's what I'm saying. So I know who I can send you to. I'm not stopping you from coming in here.
I wanna stay in the public lobby.
Cut that off because you're not authorized to, um, to film in here. Let me give you a piece of paper. Hold on. I'll give it to you. Stand right over there, please. Give me one second.
Is this a school?
No.
What is this?
It's administrative building, a public building that you can come into.
Alright then, so I can record in it?
That's what I'm gonna do, sir. I'm gonna see how I can help you.
I'm okay now. I'm just gonna gather public information.
Sign right there?
Is it happy welcome center?
Yes, it is. Give me a second. I'll be right with you, sir.
I don't need your help no more, sir. Thank you. I don't need your help no more. Thank you. I am okay. We're gonna just gather information and be on my way. Family Welcome Center.
Go right to the desk, right here. Sir, sir? Excuse me, sir?
How can I help you?
Yes. No, how can I? You're not even telling me how I can help you. So that's what I'm saying. You can't come in here just filming right there.
Coming with a public lobby, a public office?
For a public, I just told you where you want to. No, this is not a public office. No, it's a public building.
Right.
For here for the department. Give me a second. That's what I told you. Can you just wait over here for?
I'm not impeding anything, sir. I'm not anywhere I'm not supposed to be, sir.
I'm asking you out of professional courtesy. Can you wait over here?
Do I have a right to be here?
You, you, you're in here, right?
Okay.
No, no, you're in here, right?
Right.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
I'm fine, sir.
What I'm asking, can you work with me that you're in here? Can you work over here?
Can you allow me to do my thing? Thank you. Can you stop harassing me?
There you go, sir. Anything, take, take this first, so you can get this, so I know I gave it to you. Whoa, 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 let's put this on camera, please.
Can you not block my camera? Cause they're violating my rights.
No, no, I'm not bothering. No, no, no. I'm just giving you this. I'm gonna make sure you got it. You got it. There you go. So.
You wanna give it to me, or you just wanna block my camera? Cause that's for privacy, right?
I wanna give it to you right here in front of your camera.
All press and media inquiries are directed to, that's fine.
Here you go.
That's good information. I got it on camera, thank you. Remember, you put it in front of my camera? So I captured it.
Are you sure now?
Do you know what the First Amendment is, sir?
Now.
You know what the First Amendment is, sir?
Um, you said you wanted to see the superintendent, correct?
Do you know what the First Amendment is, sir?
So what I'm gonna ask you to, if you wanna still see the superintendent, you go upstairs, you sign in upstairs, as I told you before.
Am I detained?
You're actually detained.
Are you detained, me?
This is a public building. I'll let you come in.
Right? If I wanna stay here, I can stay here. Have a good day, sir. I don't need your help no more. Thank you. I said that already. How about you, how about you, how about you respect my rights?
With anything that you need, cause this is a public building.
Right, so respect your oath.
And I ask you not to, um, for, um, videotape anything. Give me one second. I'll be right with you.
Why'd you ask me that?
Go right through here.
Why would you ask me that?
Why would I ask you what?
Not to record.
Because I don't want you.
You're contradicting yourself.
Okay, that's okay.
So work in the private sector.
No, 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 no.
Who do you work for?
Give me one second.
What's your badge, what's your badge say?
Right here.
What does it say on your, on your patch, your patch?
You can read, right?
Says New York, right?
You can read, right?
Right, so who do you work for? You work for New York, right?
I wanna make sure you get everything that you can read.
You work for the public, right?
You want my shield number too?
Yeah, what is it?
Right here. Make sure you get it. Right here. And if you would like to speak to my superior. If you hold on, I'll let you speak to my superior.
Sure. You wanna, um, identify yourself to the public?
You just got the camera.
Say your name and badge number, please, cause I don't, I can't read.
Don't engage.
You can't read?
Don't engage. Don't engage. Don't engage.
Yeah, respect your oath.
Some, some stuff they work.
Especially on camera.
What's your name, sir?
I never gave it.
You never gave it?
Don't worry, good. Just.
I don't.
I was going to speak with someone.
I have a gentleman. Huh? Yes, Lieutenant, I have a gentleman who refused to give me his ID, who refused to wanna sign in. He said he wanted to go upstairs to speak to lieutenant, I mean, the superintendent. What I did was, I told him he has to show ID, sign in, and schedule an appointment. Due to the fact now, he don't wanna show no ID. He says, which I told him, this is a public building, and now he's videotaping. I gave him the piece of paper, as far as all press and media inquiries, and where he has to go, and he's steady photographing me and inside the building.
When did you ask me to ID or sign in?
Say that again, Lieutenant? Say that again, Lieutenant? Right, I told him to make an appointment to see the superintendent.
Which is what I wanna do. Please don't put your finger at me, sir.
Oh, they can videotape and do whatever. Okay, thank you, Lieutenant.
Ask him why.
That's why I called you, Lieutenant, because I wanted to make sure that I'm not disrespecting this gentleman or, or not giving him the right information.
Ask him why.
Thank you, Lieutenant. I appreciate that. Thank you. Alright.
Why don't you ask him why we could record?
Yes.
Um, I came to speak with someone about.
Isn't that funny?
So they told me to come here. I signed in.
Isn't that funny? That's why we educate. That's why you call your supervisors to get educated. Yeah, Joe Biden and Kamala Harris. Hilarious. Well, he tried, he tried his best to remain professional. A little snotty, a little attitude, which isn't called for. I tried to tell him multiple times, listen. It's called, it's the First Amendment. I'm surprised you guys don't know the First Amendment. You guys work for the public.
This door, right here.
This is a public.
Oh, sir, if you wanna go upstairs, you're allowed to go upstairs. You can go upstairs if you want to.
You continuously cut me off. You're not allowing me to speak.
Because I'm telling you the procedures of the building.
Educate me? Yes. This is a public building. I don't need to. I have the Fourth Amendment, the Fourth Amendment, which means I can remain anonymous. The only reason why I get my IDs unless I'm being arrested. I'm not being arrested, so I don't have to give you ID.
How you doing?
Pretty good.
You?
No, 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 no.
I just wanna, you work here, sir? Yes, you guys are fucking rude. Everybody in this building is rude. I tried to tell you, it's the First Amendment. You work for the public. It's a public building. Multiple times I said that. I'm happy that you called and you got educated. Next time, try to be a little bit more polite.
Oh, you wanna take this with you too, sir?
You never, and, and you lied. You know, I don't need that. It's called the First Amendment.
You sure? I'm just home in this case. You need a location, a phone number or something.
Sir, I don't need nobody's permission to record in a public building. It's called, it's called the First Amendment.
Are you here?
Freedom of the press.
You're here, right?
Right.
Okay. I didn't stop you. I even directed you where you wanted to go.
You can't block my camera, though.
Oh, who's blocking? I'm not blocking you, sir.
You put that paper, you put that piece of paper in front of my camera.
Yes.
What floor do I go to, sir?
Is that floor, um, yes, second floor.
Superintendent to make an appointment?
Yes, if you want to.
All I wanted to do was a FOIA request.
You told me what you wanted. I gave you the information. I mean, you're a smart guy, right? You're a smart guy.
I don't know everything, though.
Okay, so if you wanna go upstairs, you can go upstairs. You heard my lieutenant. He said that you could record and everything else like that.
You heard him. I knew what I can, I know what I can and can't do. As long as I don't break the law, I have a right to be here. You said that. You go ahead, man.
Anything else I can assist you with?
No.
You sure?
Yeah. Can you give me the phone number for this office, please?
Give me the phone number?
Yes, please.
Yes.
For this office.
Right here.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
This is right here. You're welcome, sir. If anything else that you need, please let me know.
You're a star. Just wanna let you know. You're a star.
Yes.
God bless you. Have a great day. Thank you.
Have a blessed day.
So we'll go to the second floor. See, look at these cameras. Public information, public information. Freedom is not free. I love that. People like me fight for it every day. Queens Concession Stand, NYC Department of Education. One two, New York City Small Business Support Center, fourth floor. Transition Service for New York Adult Protective Services. Small Business Support Center, fourth floor. Fourth floor. God.
Need your help, sir? No problem.
Thanks for being open minded, to be educated.
So much. You was a real courtesy. Thank you.
God bless you, sir. Thank you. Was he being sincere or was he being sarcastic? I guess we never know. I guess it doesn't matter. Him just saying it, is, you consider that professional? What is this? This is the Department of Education. This is education.
I'm asking you here for the superintendent office?
Yes, yes.
No, you come downstairs. Come on.
Thank you so much.
I want you here to see Natasha.
I just wanna get some public information and possibly file a complaint. Because people don't know what the First Amendment is, and they need to be retrained. There's a lot of, a lot of retraining that needs to happen.
Good afternoon, sir.
How are you? What's your name and last name?
Charisse.
Charisse? Hi, how are you?
Hi.
I'm recording, ma'am, and I'm gonna conduct business. If you don't feel comfortable being on camera, maybe you can get somebody else that can help me. Because that would be the second time I'm getting denied public services in a public building. You guys are doing that on camera, mind you.
You haven't done anything.
Right. I just came from the building around the corner.
I don't know about.
Trying to conduct business, and I understand you may not feel comfortable, but I still have services that I need to receive. So maybe you can get somebody else that can help me.
We're happy to serve you.
Right. I don't understand. You guys work for the public.
We understand that.
Right, so we can record you at all times while you're at work. Even if you're not at work, as soon as you step out in a public, there's no expectation of privacy in public, so you walked by a hundred cameras on your way to this building. It's crazy how the, our public servants, they just take the job and they don't train them on the First Amendment. It's crazy. I understand you may not feel comfortable being on camera, but if that's the case, you step into a private office. Hello, how are you?
Good morning.
My name is Guy Freeman. I'm trying to conduct business. I went around the corner to, Access? I think it was called Access?
That's sure.
It's like a Department of Education. It's right around the corner.
Oh, around the corner from this building?
Yes.
Through the hallway?
No, around the corner from this building.
Okay.
I'm trying to do FOIA requests. I wanna get public information. I'm doing a story on the Board of Education. And I just wanna acquire, I just wanna submit a FOIA request. I don't want you guys to fulfill it right now. I just want you guys to forward it to the proper departments. And, um, I just keep getting mad. Keep, people just keep denying me public services on camera. So right now I feel discriminated against because I'm exercising my rights. So if I wasn't recording, you guys would help me, but because I'm exercising my First Amendment, you guys are gonna help me.
That's not the case at all?
I'm not saying you. I'm saying in general, from my experience today, that's what it seems like. Because I'm exercising my First Amendment, freedom of the press, I'm getting denied public services.
So what is it that you need?
I wanna get the name, title, and salaries of all employees at this building, in the building around the corner. I wanna get the twenty twenty-three budget as well. I just wanna submit that here. Just get a copy and I'll be on my way.
A lot of that information is public?
That's why I'm requesting it now.
Right.
Yeah. Not everybody has internet access. I do this in, in person. I like to come in person, see the faces of the public employees, check out when you guys, see how you treat the public, see if you're educated on our rights, and see if you respect our rights. Because you guys all should be trained on the First Amendment, that the citizens could come and watch you while you work. It's checks and balances.
Right.
And we also have the right to redress our government, so if we feel like we was mistreated, we have the right to file complaints. I don't wanna file complaints. I'd rather speak to a supervisor and maybe, there could be a memo as far as recording in public, it's a public building. As long as I'm not in any restricted areas, I'm not impeding business, I'm not being disorderly.
Which you're not.
I have a right to be here, just like everyone else.
Correct.
And I have a right to exercise my rights. So if I wanted to come and go into a public area and pray, I would have that right because we have freedom of religion.
Correct.
So, same like freedom of press. I'm just working on a story on the Board of Education.
Okay.
That's it. What was your name? I'm sorry.
Doctor Hall.
Doctor Hall. Isn't that beautiful?
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I love that. So if you can just write down my FOIA request?
Okay, so what's going on over there? Okay, the gentleman didn't sign in up here.
Nobody asked me to sign in.
No, I told you, I told you if you're going upstairs to see the superintendent, that you must sign in, show your ID because you wanna see the superintendent. I explained to you, this is a public building.
It is a public building.
Right, and then if you're going to see someone, you're gonna, you said the superintendent. I told you to sign in after you sign in. I told you, I told you, sir. You was downstairs. Come on, you're smarter than that.
It's a public building, right?
But anyway, like I said, I got the lieutenant on the phone. Go up to the front, sign in, and when you sign in, do you remember what I told you? You cannot see the superintendent directly.
I don't wanna see the superintendent.
That's what you told me, sir. Rewind. So if you wanna see the superintendent, I told you, make an appointment with Natalie or Sonia.
You're doing, you're doing what you, what you did downstairs, which is not allowing you to talk.
No, I'm not asking you to talk because I told you already downstairs, sir. And I had my, uh, lieutenant on speaker, so he informed me.
Ask the lieutenant about the Fourth Amendment.
I'm asking you to go sign in right now. Follow me, please.
Come on. Let's go sign into a public building.
Thank you so much. I knew you were smarter than that, young man. And I told you downstairs to sign in. Why are you gonna do that? Seriously, why would you do that?
When I came up, she said, follow me, sir. She didn't say sign in first. She said, follow me. You wasn't here. You were downstairs.
I told you what to do when you come upstairs, because I wasn't upstairs.
She told me to follow her, so I'm following her. Let's sign in. Come on. Let's sign into a public building.
Are you still there, Lieutenant?
Yeah, so.
Okay, he's signing in right now.
Actually, Lieutenant, actually, I don't give ID.
You need your ID? Sign in right there, please? Yes, sir.
If they not, if they don't have, if they don't have any appointment, they with the superintendent, you're gonna have to come back on the day that the appointment is given.
Got you. Thank you. So why are you signing in?
I wanna do a FOIA request. I don't need an appointment to do a FOIA request.
Yes, sir.
You have to ask me to leave first.
Thank you. Sign in, please. Do you still wanna continue?
Are you trespassing me here?
No, no, I'm asking. Do you still wanna see the superintendent?
Leave first.
Do you still wanna see the superintendent?
I just wanna submit a FOIA request. That's it.
Sign in right here, please?
Alrighty.
Thank you. So I really appreciate you. Thank you.
Ma'am, do I need an appointment to submit a legal document?
I really don't know. I'm new to this, so that's why he called.
Can you have her, can you have the lady, the doctor, come speak with me, please? All visitors in. How is somebody gonna make an appointment if they can't come in person to make an appointment? How they gonna have an appointment if they can't come here to make an appointment? What is this? North Korea? You gotta have a picture of these people on every floor, every wall? This is taking way too long. What am I waiting for now, ma'am?
I guess it's sign in.
I signed in.
You signed in already?
Yeah, so can I?
Coming back to you.
I was in the middle of conducting business, right? And once, and once I sign in, am I allowed to enter?
No, he gotta escort you. That's why I escorted you, but I didn't know you didn't sign in at that.
Downstairs? I gotta sign in downstairs or just the floor that I'm going to?
Coming up to.
Okay.
But I never knew that you came up and didn't sign.
That's what I'm saying. I'm like, nobody asked me to sign in. Well, you didn't ask me, I didn't, you didn't ask me to sign in, that's why. So now that I've signed in, can, am I allowed to conduct business?
I believe so. I know what he's doing. Let me see. Car gonna pick up?
I don't wanna be here all day.
Stand by, stand by.
Yeah, like, you do too much. I don't respect.
He's doing way too much. All this because I wanted to get public information. That's crazy.
And what you're supposed to do is sign you in downstairs and escort you upstairs. He wasn't supposed to send you upstairs, sign in, and then go.
So do I have to sign in downstairs as well?
No.
This is taking way too long for something so simple. Can you just give me the phone number here?
I don't know the main number here.
The doctor's number?
Which doctors? Like four doctors here.
Yeah, the, um, the lady I just spoke to.
They're not doctors who you spoke to?
She said she's a doctor.
She did say that.
I guess she has a doctorate. Did you like some gum?
No, thank you, thank you.
Do you have a card for this office? Ma'am, do you have the address? So I can find all the name in the building?
The address is ninety eight twenty seven Suffolk Boulevard.
Ninety twenty seven Suffolk Boulevard?
Correct.
Alright. Thank you.
You're welcome.
How would somebody file a complaint? What are you, you school safety?
No.
Are you considered?
Security.
Aren't you a peace officer?
No.
What does your badge say? I just wanna, your patch. I'll keep going with the badge. Department of Education. Let's see what he has to say, because I'm about to leave.
Okay, what they gonna do? They gonna speak with him, they're gonna ask him why he's here and to set up a scheduled appointment, which he wants to see the superintendent. You ready? Yeah, yeah.
Can I enter? I signed in.
Okay, come on.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Alright, so why he's, uh, going to be hurt now, or he's going to need somebody to do the appointment?
Yes.
At that point, he's just gonna be videotaping.
At that point, he should stop?
Yes.
Why?
How come?
He got, they're trying, they're trying to help him out, and they need to find out what he's there for. Uh, he's going to an office. Uh, he's at the lobby?
No, he's up here on the second floor. I got him right here by the superintendent office.
Yeah, so if he goes to the superintendent office, he needs to start videotaping. That's a private office right there.
The door's wide open.
Okay.
He was at the lobby.
Okay.
Allowed to be.
Okay, yes. Okay, you have to cut that off if you're here to see.
Ma'am, for full transparency, I do not wish to start recording. All I wanted to do, like I said before, is submit a FOIA request. Do I need, do I need an appointment with the superintendent just to submit a FOIA request?
Can you give me one moment? I'm sorry.
I'll stay right here in this public hallway.
Okay, he's not coming into the, um, superintendent area. He's standing in the hall. Excuse me one second, sir.
That's fine. If you want privacy, you have to create it. These are buttons. They did an awesome job right there. That's pretty cool. It's the same like Sony. If this is a school, this would be assigned in. I'm in the publicly accessible hallway. That's so cute. They did such a great job. They did such a great job. That's awesome. I think they did that with string and glue.
Okay, as you heard the lieutenant, if you come in, the camera has to be off because you're conducting business, you signed in. And this right here is off limits to camera, the superintendent area, so you are allowed to come in and speak to him.
So let's say we're in City Hall, right?
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I hear what you're saying.
Not City Hall, I'm just telling you the procedure out of respect, how I showed you, how you work with me diligently, as well as I work with you. So as you heard the lieutenant, and and I, and I uh. Compliment you for signing in, doing what you did, and waiting, and being patient, I really appreciate that. As you heard the lieutenant, once you come in here, in the superintendent area, that has to come off and you conduct your business.
I understand.
Okay.
And like I said, for full transparency, while I'm conducting my business with the government, I would like to continue. Sir, I did not cut you off now one time when you spoke, please give me the same respect.
Go ahead, sir.
As I'm conducting business with the local government.
Yes, sir, excuse me, sir. Well, when they come into the building, what I do, I inform them as I do that he has to sign in, show ID, and make an appointment. There is no walk-in to see the superintendent, he has to stop. There's no appointment being made as yet, once he informed me that he wants to make a scheduled appointment. But that he wants to see the superintendent, I informed him, there is no walking in seeing the superintendent. You are to sign in, go upstairs, speak to Natalie or Sonia, and they will schedule your appointment. That is the procedure when anybody wants to come in here, to see the superintendent, they don't walk in and see personally.
Right, I see, the gentleman was uh, so hostile at the beginning, or sending in, or sending in, or sending in. You just have to call, and have somebody to come downstairs, and to make an appointment downstairs, not taking him up there, that you have been.
That's noted, sir.
Right, so now, what's happening, the gentleman was giving you an appointment?
Well, right now, we was um discussing inside here, I told them that what you said, what you said and what he heard. That if he stepped into the superintendent area, the camera has to be off, did you not say that?
Right.
Okay, so I'm just now just. Well, he's right standing on the outside with the, and they already know that the camera has to.
Can I speak to your, can I speak to your supervisor, please, can I speak to your lieutenant?
Alright, so what, what uh, so right now, you're on the second floor?
Right now, he's on the se, right now, he's on the second floor, he signed in, he complied, and everything else like that. So now he wants to um, talk with someone into the superintendent office to make an appointment. Now I told him the camera has to come off. Second floor, no, right after he signed in, I walked him over here before letting him come in, which he's still standing on the outside, not by the desk.
Okay, so take him back to the desk.
And have them come out and speak with him.
Take him up to the desk. And have somebody from the superintendent office come out and see if they can help the gentleman out. If there is nothing else they can do, and they say, okay, we give him a photo.
Can I speak to your supervisor, please?
Okay, no problem, they're gonna see you at the desk over here, sir.
Ma'am.
Sir, they're gonna see you at the desk over here.
I just wanna get her business card.
No, 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 they're gonna call.
So you, so.
The business card and everything, I'm gonna have them come out there. Can you wait at the front desk over there, sir?
I just wanna submit it, I just wanna write it out and submit it.
I would appreciate, just wait at the desk, we're coming right. For him to take him to the desk, and y'all come to the desk, can't talk to him right here.
Publicly accessible, right?
No, up to the front over here. Thank you, walk with me over here, please.
I do not wish to do my FOIA request online, I wish to do my FOIA request in person, not everybody has internet access, that's why I came in person. All I wanna do is write them a.
Can you speak with him at the desk up there, please?
This is publicly accessible. I am not trespassing. I am not trespassing in this area. I am not trespassing in this area, it's publicly accessible, just like downstairs, remember?
No, we're not trespassing, nobody said that, sir.
So this whole time you've been speaking over me, you think I don't know what I'm doing, you think I come here? I don't know what I'm doing.
Yeah, she'll talk to you, sir.
I know what I can and can't do, sir, I educated you downstairs that I know what I'm doing. Remember, you had to call your supervisor to find out that I'm in the right.
If you're here to take care of business, I can help you with what you want.
I'm not here, I, I spoke with you, you were very cordial.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not here to set up an appointment with the superintendent, I'm here to submit a FOIA request for public information, that's it. I do not wish to go through three one one, I do not wish to do it by mail, I wish to do it in person, which I have the right to do. So I just want you to write it out and forward it to the private department, the onus would be on you to forward it to the private department. Because not everybody can get to Albany, not everybody can get to Manhattan. Are you saying that you don't have to accept, you don't have to accept my FOIA request?
Correct, we don't do FOIA requests, we don't do FOIA requests, you can do the FOIA request, and.
Is that the form?
Yes, it is, it's the form where you can fax it, you can call it in, you can email it.
And today I wish to submit it with this office.
No, I've never, I've never heard of that.
I can submit it through any Board of Education office, the onus would be on you to forward it to the private departments via the FOIA law.
Yes, sir.
Because not everybody could get to Albany, not everybody could get to that office. Today, I can access this office, I would like to fill this out, submit it with you, get a copy, and then you forward it to the private department, ma'am. That would be your job, because you work here, through the FOIA law, ma'am. That's what I'm trying to explain to you.
No, no, I, I listen, I can hear exactly what you're saying.
Where does your FOIA request go, who handles your FOIA request?
No, see, so, so I can just tell you, when, when we've, when the cities receive the FOIA request, like, we will get a message. And it's not even me, because I don't, I don't, I don't sit in those types of seats, right? And then the city will send the FOIA request, like, you need to give whatever, whatever just that someone's asking for, the individual, but it's not us. We get almost like them, we need to submit this, whatever documentation it is that you're requesting.
The information that I want is on this office. The name, title, salaries of the employees that work here in this office.
District office twenty eight?
For this office, yes, for this district right here.
But you would still have to make the request, and I guess it would be specific, I've never filled that one.
Can you write it out for me, please?
Fill it out for you, I cannot.
Of course you could, you work for the public.
Fill out a, a request.
What if I couldn't write, what if I was dyslexic, what if I didn't know how to write or read?
I would then ask who would be the person, it wouldn't be me, I've never, I've never.
It would be a public servant, anybody that works for the public is here to help me.
And I'm not saying no, I would have to find out, but this is.
Can you give me a pen, I wanna submit this with you today. All I need is a copy for my records, okay, you keep the original. Alright.
I'm not, no, I'm going to give it to you, and then I'll find out who will email it for you.
I'm gonna submit it with you, and whatever you need to do with it.
I'm not the person to take the FOIA.
Ma'am, you work here, so whatever you need to do with it, just get it to the right person.
Make sure that whoever you need to get it to, it gets to, and I wanna know if it's I'm the person who submits it.
Respectfully, you're a representative of this office, and I'm submitting it with a representative of this office. Your job would be to just give it to the right person, ma'am, I'm not saying that you're, I'm saying this office is responsible, cause I'm submitting with you.
Right, and and I'm just saying that while you fill that out, let me find out what I need to find out.
Of course, I understand, I just need a copy for my records, that's it, okay?